Welcome to the Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Well, where did a year and a half go, but this is our first meeting back, maskless. And I think our second meeting back, this, well, actually, second meeting with these five council members all together, not some being virtual, so it's, it's nice to be getting back slowly to somewhat normalcy. So, thank you for all being here and all those people watching at home as well. Just have a brief announcement about our open podium that we offer residents here in Eden Prairie. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government prior to each council meeting, which typically occur on the first and third Tuesday of each month. Open podium occurs from 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412. By noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter, so we can be better prepared for you. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have any questions about open podium, please do contact the city manager's office. Mr. Getcho, do you say something prior to me reading the Arbor Day proclamation?
Mayor, the only thing I would add is this is something that we've done annually, every year for the last several decades.
Mr. Lothammer, do you say something prior to me reading the proclamation?
Yes, Your Honor, if I could.
It wasn't in my notes, I apologize.
These, these next two items actually come together, both related to forestry and forestry accomplishments. And so, we're going to ask that Matt Born and Lauren Stuffed tell you a little bit more about what happened on Arbor Day, and council member Toomey was there to see it firsthand as well. And during that presentation, we'll take a slight break to read the proclamation. And then, the second item is also our Sterling Award that we've received, and they'll tell you a little bit about that and how prestigious that is, too. So, tonight, I know many of you know our Parks and Natural Resources manager, Matt Born, and forestry is something that he works with very closely every single day. And with him tonight is Lauren Stuffed, and Lauren is our forestry technician. And so, she's that person that I get a lot of feedback from residents that says, there was this really great person that came out and gave me some advice about my trees and what I should do. And she's done outstanding customer service, but what you'll see also tonight is, since Lauren joined our team just a couple of years ago, our ability to get grants and partnerships and do some things that have major impacts in our forestry and natural resources, she has been very, very responsible for that. And one other thing I should highlight about Lauren is probably the mayor's favorite employee, she is the Assistant Weed Inspector.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
It's not often we have both the Assistant Weed Inspector and the Weed Inspector in the same room, so we'll recognize that tonight, so.
You do need to tell people that's a statutory requirement, but I actually don't do anything with that. Thank you for being that person.
She helps you whenever she can. So, I'll turn it over to Matt, and Matt and Lauren will tell you a little bit more about it, and then give a break to read the proclamation, and then tell you about the award we received.
Great, welcome.
All right, hello, Mayor, council members. Nice to be here again, within about a month to have, be able to share with you some of the good things that we have going on in Parks and Natural Resources. So, what I'm going to do is kind of give you a brief overview of what Tree City USA is, which would then be the combination of both the items, the Arbor Day proclamation, and then the Sterling City Award. So, Tree City USA started in 1976 by the Arbor Day Foundation, and Eden Prairie has been participating since 1982. So, quite a long run of Eden Prairie being known as a Tree City USA. So, what the Tree City USA program is, is it measures communities on four different initiatives or standards related to forestry and urban forestry and trees. One is maintain a tree board or a department, have a tree care ordinance, forestry program with an annual budget of at least $2 per capita, and then, as mentioned, the Arbor Day observance and proclamation. So, going to kind of run through some of the updates in these areas that we've been doing it recently, and then, as we said, do the proclamation and the award ceremony. So, basically, the tree department, that first one, is our Forestry and Natural Resources Division, but we actually have two tree care ordinances with the city. Our Shade Tree Pest Control Ordinance, which controls Dutch elm disease, oak wilt, and Emerald Ash Bore. Obviously, Emerald Ash Bore has been the one that's been getting a lot of play in the news lately with its spread that Lauren will kind of walk you through and let you know what's been happening there. But then also a tree preservation ordinance, which is tied to preserving trees either through development or different land uses, and trying to preserve our urban forest. So, I'll let Lauren kind of walk through some of the things, and then, again, we'll do the proclamation and the award.
Hi, I'm Lauren, Forestry and Natural Resources technician. So, as Matt had alluded to, Emerald Ash Bore has been in the news since 2009 when it was discovered in St. Paul. We had our first infestation here in April of 2017. This map shows where that infestation was, just kind of a small, little harmless-looking blob. But in 2019, we found 130 more trees. You'll see, I'll go in a few slides to parabolic graph that is all too familiar nowadays, that we have all become accustomed to with COVID. But in 2020, we saw 758 ash trees. We expect this to continue to increase over the next few years. This is a little excerpt from our Emerald Ash Bore plan that we put together. It came in front of council, you guys may be familiar with it, maybe been a while since you've seen it, though. But what we are looking at here is the predicted mortality curve. So, EAB is going to be a lot of work for us coming up soon, already has been, it will continue to be. And we've been doing a lot as a city to kind of offset that, which we can talk about. So, the three things we've gone through, or four things we've gone through, is treating a portion of our ash trees that are healthy and in good shape, that are providing a lot of benefits to the community, removing ash trees that are maybe poorly placed, you know, under power lines, or otherwise nice trees in the area that could make up for that loss, and then planting to offset any removals, and then outreach and education, so our citizens know that they can expect to be losing any ash trees that they're not treating on their properties. And here we have our treatment numbers. So, we have a program with a private contractor that goes out to bid to give Eden Prairie residents discounted treatment rates. It's a great program because it lets our, makes treatment more accessible for residents, but also allows them to treat more trees, which is great for the environmental impact of preserving trees from dying from the pest. And you'll see Eden Prairie, for the past, at least, well, really, I think since we've started in 2018, we've had more, the most public engagement, so most people taking advantage of that savings than any other city. And Rainbow, who is our current contractor, does more of this type of program than any other contractor, so that's something we're really proud of, that we have a lot of people engaged in treating their trees and getting the message about Emerald Ash Bore. So, we're planting, our goal is one and a half trees for every tree we remove in a park or right away, every ash tree. We've been able to keep up with that, a lot of grant funding has gone to making that possible. We're trying to do this in a way that's economically responsible because Emerald Ash Bore can have a huge economic impact on cities. So, one of the things we've been working on as well to help kind of offset the, the loss of trees on private property is having a tree sale where people can purchase trees at a reasonable cost, variety of trees that aren't common in Eden Prairie. So, hopefully, when we have our next, I don't know, Emerald Ash Bore that kills maple trees or something like that, we have a more.
Don't say that.
Yeah, I know, cross fingers. But, um, knock on wood, I guess.
Not maple tree, yeah.
Yeah. But then, we can, you know, be better prepared as a community. And then also doing, you know, just a lot of outreach marketing, so people, you know, know that we want them to replant on private property after they lose trees or remove trees. Here's been our planting numbers over the last few years since we had Emerald Ash Bore, and those locations were for 2021, so we just tend to spread out as much as we can throughout the city, make sure, make sure all areas are being planted equitably. And Matt's going to talk about some of this grant funding.
So, yeah, if you can remember, the third part of kind of the Tree City USA was budget. And obviously, we've got our own budget in our, our general budget, but what we've been able to kind of help out with the tree planting and some of the other programs, we've been able to partner with Hennepin County on quite a few grants. We actually have one that we're hoping to finalize here soon with the DNR for another grant in 2021. So, that's really helped out. And then also our Tree Fund, that some of you may be familiar with as part of our tree preservation ordinance, gives developers an option to pay into that, which then we can use those funds for other tree-related, natural resources-related projects. So, that's really been helping supplement the impacts of EAB to our general budget. So then, kind of just some of the other partnerships and grants, Green Corp's, another $20,000, or $20,000-plus for a Green Corp member, as we'd mentioned, the Hennepin County EAB grants, Hennepin County Ecological Restoration Partnership, which has been taking place out at Prairie Bluff Conservation Area and Richard T. Anderson Conservation Area, trying to restore some of those oak savannas in those areas. And then also, the Watershed District giving us some money towards the tree sale. So, again, some of those ecological restoration efforts have been happening all over the city, but the big ones, Prairie Bluff and Richard T. Anderson. And then also, a lot of buckthorn removal projects at Miller Park and Cardinal Creek, and then some other garlic, mustard, and invasive species control at Riley Creek Woods. So, you can see kind of how many hours of volunteer hours, again, relying on different groups and stuff to kind of help us supplement what we're able to do and expand on what we're able to do. So, so then, the last part of that was the Arbor Day celebration and tree sale that we held a couple of weeks ago now. So, another beautiful day, sold quite a few trees, and as part of that, we also have to do the Arbor Day proclamation. So, I think at this point, Mayor.
Sure. I'd love to read this, thank you. As somebody that moved on to an acre and a half piece of property that, at the time, I think had maybe seven or eight fairly mature trees on it, I've planted over the years, probably my wife and I, probably over 300, we've lost quite a few, but we still probably have 200 on our property. So, I'm, I'm a tree supporter lover from, from the beginning. Proclamation Arbor Day, April 30th, 2021. Whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And, whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees, and, whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and, whereas trees, whenever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas Eden Prairie first celebrated Arbor Day in 1982, and whereas Eden Prairie has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and desires to continue its tree stewardship and tree planting ways. Now, therefore, I, Ron Case, Mayor of the City of Eden Prairie, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2021, as Arbor Day in the City of Eden Prairie, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and to support our city's urban forestry program. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations adopted by the Eden Prairie City Council on May 18th, 2021.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. And then, the second part, so as part of Tree City USA, we're also awarded the Sterling City Award this year. So, growth awards are given to communities every year that expand on and grow kind of their initiatives, their different projects and stuff like that. And if you are awarded the growth award for 10 years, you are awarded the Sterling City Award. And so, we were awarded that this year. We're actually only the sixth city in Minnesota to receive this award, and the first since 2016. So, pretty, pretty nice accomplishment, I think, with the different partnerships and different things we've been able to expand on to, to be recognized now as a Sterling City. So, with that.
Should we have a picture with the three of us, or? No? Yeah, I think we should. Rather than just hand it off, don't you think? You all have done a lot of work on helping to hear this. You know, this is, I'm sorry. Yeah, let me just make one statement quick. Absolutely. This is a big deal. And to have been part of city council that Nancy Lukens, Nancy Terlukens and I, back in 1995, helped to initiate the tree replacement preservation policy, which I believe was one of the first of its kind in the state and been copied by dozens of cities. The fact that we sometimes, as a council, need to approve projects, development projects, that take trees down, but we have this replacement policy that sometimes I know people say 10 or 20 years is a forever-long time. But now that I've lived through the 25 years since we started the tree preservation policy, and we've seen now the city just plastered with 25-year-old trees, it's really a great thing that we've done in Eden Prairie. And I think it was Stu Fox, I think I keep quoting him, that we have more trees in Eden Prairie today, and it makes sense that we do intuitively than at any time since the Ice Age, because we've been a prairie oak savanna. So, the fact that we are more treed today than ever, and continuing to not only plant more trees but replace trees, we do a good job with this. So, thank you to our staff who have led the way on this, and to really 25 years of city councils and all of you up here. Councilmember Naurianen.
Yeah, Mayor, I think you almost answered, you did answer my question. About the rate of, number of trees that we are planting is consistently increasing. Like Mayor said, you know, we have so many development come here, and most of us, or all of us, doesn't like to cut down big trees, but sometimes we have to. But at the same time, we know, maybe we're cutting one tree or two tree, but we are preserving, putting other ones, and overall, the Eden Prairie perspective, we are doing better. So, it's a great feeling, and thank you. Really appreciate it.
Do we need a motion on this? It reads like, no, okay. It's just to receive the Sterling Award. I love the fact that we're only the sixth city and the first one since 2016. Again, a big deal. All right. Mr. Getcho, human rights awards.
Thank you, Mayor and council. For the last few years, we've been, our Human Rights and Diversity Commission has taken up and headed and managed and awarded citywide human rights awards. So, our, I believe, kicking things off, because we have participation from many of our members, Megan's kicking off, Megan, our liaison to this commission, will be kicking off our program for the awards tonight.
Good evening, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, council, we're honored to be in front of you again tonight. This is always a joy for our commission to come every year, and introduce some community members and organizations, to you who have been doing fantastic work in our community, oftentimes for years, to bring them in front of us, to recognize the contribution that they make, and to celebrate the accomplishments that they've made on behalf of our residents. So, we have four commissioners here tonight who will be presenting awards to our recipients, three of which were able to be here tonight, one of which is out in the community doing work as we speak. And so, they sent a message instead for me to share. But to kick it off, we will have Joan Howe-Pulis come to the stage with Si Han.
Hello, my name is Si Han Aden, and I'm a student commissioner from the Eden Prairie High School, and I will be presenting Joan Howe-Pulis' reward, award, I mean. Joan Howe-Pulis upholds the values of the Eden Prairie Manifesto by demonstrating a deep commitment to building a more welcoming and inclusive community. She has been involved in countless community initiatives and organizations, including the Eden Prairie Housing Task Force, Eden Prairie House Human Rights and Diversity Commission, interfaith outreach, and the New American Development Center. Joan's position as the Director of Justice at the Pax Christi Catholic Community has allowed her to mobilize the Pax Christi community in service of others through different initiatives such as the Giving Garden. Joan is tireless in her efforts to serve others, from showing up at the Broadmoor Apartments with a truck ready to help displaced residents moving into new housing, to advocating for affordable housing opportunities through her work on the Eden Prairie Housing Task Force. Her accomplishments and contributions are too extensive to list, but her spirit remains consistent. Joan believes that regardless of race, economic status, gender, relationship status, all are equal stakeholders. It is a recognition that whether you are a new arrival to Eden Prairie or a longtime resident, Eden Prairie is stronger than ever when everyone has a place to come together. Her impact on our community is immeasurable, and we are honored to recognize her tonight with this award.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joan, so well deserved. Thank you. You can adjust that mic up or down if it.
So we can hear you probably.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Serena Jane, and I'm a student commissioner on the Human Rights and Diversity Commission, and I will be presenting an award to Upsher. So, Upsher upholds the values of Eden Prairie Manifesto by supporting his fellow students as they strive to maintain their educational goals during the COVID crisis. By helping his peers maintain a connection to their education, he has eased their mental strain during distance learning. He encourages his peers to treat one another with respect and accept one another for who they are. His future is bright as he pursues an internship to learn the science of soil cultivation. He plans to develop skills to battle food insecurity by empowering youth to grow their own food. Upsher is a shining example of a young person that strives to support those around him, and we look forward to seeing where his path takes him.
Upsher, thank you. And, you know, our world needs so badly young people to lead the way, so thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sam Griffin. I'm the Commissioner with the Human Rights and Diversity Commission. I'm presenting the nonprofit award tonight to the Hope Speaks Project. The Hope Speaks Project upholds the values of Eden Prairie's manifesto by providing a platform for parents to learn how to talk about racism with their children, for parents to build relationships with one another, and support a strong multicultural community. The Hope Speaks Project recognizes that silence perpetuates racism, and that there is a need for families to have honest, open, personal, and engaged conversations to actively combat racism in our homes and our community. Co-executive directors Megan Malone and Kristen Peale provide a support environment for participants to have uncomfortable conversations, and the compassion that they model empowers participants to go into our community with a greater understanding of ourselves, our neighbors, and our community. By providing members, by empowering, by empowering community members to address racism head-on, the Hope Speaks Project makes a brighter future possible. As Megan mentioned, they are performing a program tonight in the community, so Megan will be reading the statement on their behalf.
Thanks, Sam.
As Hope Speaks is not able to join us tonight, they asked us to share this message from co-executive directors Megan Malone and Kristen Peale. The Hope Speaks Project is honored to receive this award. Our mission is to normalize conversations about race and racism through family-centered classes that develop racial literacy in order to build an anti-racist community that will interrupt policies and practices that perpetuate systemic racism. The Hope Speaks Project began as an idea from two educator moms who were struggling to engage their own young children in meaningful conversations about race and racism. Through our own racial journeys and continual growth, we recognized the power of silence in maintaining the status quo, and how well-intentioned white people sustain racist systems of oppression while believing in their innocence. Inspired by the quote "Hope will never be silent" by human rights activist Harvey Milk, we were determined to begin an essential dialogue in the impact of race and racism using a family-centered approach. The goal is for families to engage with one another in honest, open, personal, and engaged, to come up with hope, conversations that would build the muscle to sit in discomfort and lead to collective actions that would disrupt the policies and practices that perpetuate systemic racism. This award does not belong to us, it belongs to all of the Hope Speaks participants who have chosen to engage in conversations about race, racism, and whiteness. Receiving this recognition is a testament that these conversations are spreading. Our greatest hope is that this work continues with our friends, our neighbors, our colleagues, our kids, and even at our own dinner tables. Thank you for this honor.
Very nice. Megan, communicate our appreciation and thanks to the Hope Speaks Project.
Members of the city council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, my name is Phil Sky. I'm a Commissioner on the Human Rights and Diversity Commission, and it's my pleasure to present the business award this evening to Southwest Transit Prime MD. Southwest Transit Prime MD program upholds the values of the Eden Prairie Manifesto by providing non-emergency medical transportation to ensure that residents have access to appropriate medical care. Transportation access impacts the daily lives of residents and is a social determinant of health. Seniors, individuals with disabilities, and those with barriers to transportation benefit most from Prime MD services. As Eden Prairie's demographics continue to shift, accessible transportation has been a challenge for community members. Prime MD offers the opportunity for residents to maintain their independence and health needs, and we are thrilled to recognize them this evening. I'm glad to say that both Len and Matt are here from Southwest, so after I present the award, Len is just going to say a couple words. Thank you.
Well, this is quite, quite an honor. It's the second time we've been honored with the same award, and I'm very appreciative of it. As you know, it's been a tough year, tough year on a lot of people. And our organization had a lot of losses, as you can imagine, with ridership and so forth. But we also saw another part of our communities and our operation in terms of how we could provide some help to those that really needed it the most. And the prime system that we started really in 2015, we kind of pivoted to do a lot more in terms of Prime MD rolled out to get people to medical appointments, our basic prime service we expanded, and that is the one part of our operation that has seen some growth. And so, we're very happy for that. But the, the other thing is, as we start to climb out of it, we're not going to leave this behind. We really see this as the future, and we'll be providing more of this type of service as we go forward. I also should, should mention Matt Faiton here. Matt is our new CEO, or, no, I gave him a title. See, oh, excuse me. Matt's, Matt's.
He got, he got really excited.
Yeah. So, Matt's been with us for quite some time, but has now moved into that position. He's really the brains behind the prime program, so I just wanted to recognize Matt. And like the first presentation tonight, where they talked about you have a weed inspector, Matt also oversees our drug and alcohol program, so we have our own weed inspector on, on our staff as well. as well. With that, thank you very much.
Len and Matt, thank you. We're so happy always to have Southwest in our, within our borders but serving our people. And I think if you've won this award twice, it's got to be 300th or something award your organization has won. You just win them all, and you deserve it.
Mayor, they just started a service to the airport.
Oh.
So they keep continuously innovating and really proud to be part of your organization as well. Good job.
For our residents, we have one and/or two at different times council members sitting on the Southwest Transit Board, and we've had that for 30-some years, I think. So we've had a deep partnership and really appreciate them being there, so. And congratulations on your CEO position.
Thanks, Matt.
All right, Mr. Getchel, we have a donation this evening.
Oh, we do, Mayor. Mr. Lothammer's going to handle that.
Mr. Lothammer, it's not in my notes again. I don't mean to be leaving you out, but...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to get to your notes here soon.
Yeah.
Your Honor, council members, we are fortunate to receive this donation, and as staff, we've been working on some concepts and designs on how to upgrade, update, and do a little bit of expansion within the walls of the senior center. And it could certainly use that. For those who aren't aware, it was formerly the City Hall and since then has been used as a senior center. I like to tell people that what's now the woodshop used to be the council chambers, and it surprises a lot of people who have been using the senior center. So when this local resident heard about our efforts and that we were looking into these concepts, even though she herself is not a user of the senior center, she recognizes the value of what that does for other people and wanted to be a part of it financially. Her hope also, although not being named, her hope is, is that this might inspire other people that have the ability to give, to give towards a project like this. And so we need to, by state statute, accept this gift tonight by the council, and I will make sure that we pass on the thanks to her. We'll continue to keep her involved as, as the project goes forward, but again, she does wish to be anonymous, so.
That's, that's amazing, and so definitely pass that gratitude on to her.
Absolutely.
So council, this does require motions or...
I move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of 25,000 from local resident to go towards seniors and their building improvements.
Second. Any further conversation? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right. Okay, moving on to the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any items to add to our agenda this evening? So I do, under 14A reports of council members, I'd like to give a report and, and just have a conversation on initiatives for preserving the Miller Spring. So if there's nothing else, is there a motion then to approve the agenda as amended?
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
Second. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right. Minutes. Anybody have any items to question or any parts of either the workshop or the city council agenda, minutes that they wish to question?
I do, Mayor.
Yes.
On page 18, it would be, let's see here, the fifth paragraph.
Which, which minutes?
Oh, excuse me, I apologize. The, the council minutes itself.
Okay.
It's the fifth paragraph on page 18, and there's a sentence in there where I'm speaking. Now I gotta, I apologize here, I just had it.
Okay.
Okay. It says, "He spoke to many people about his decision," it says, "being predetermined tonight." What it should say is, "He spoke to many people about his decision not being predetermined." Big difference.
Yes, good catch.
Anything else?
No.
Anybody else? Is there a motion then that would approve both of the minutes? Councilmember Toomey?
Sure. I'll move to approve the minutes with Councilmember Freiberg's correction for the council meeting held Tuesday, May 4, and also the minutes for the council workshop held Tuesday, May 4, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right. Consent calendar. Any items A through L that, well, first, Mr. Getchel, any additions, corrections, everything as is, okay?
As is, Mayor.
Council, any items you wish to question, even have pulled for further discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent items A through L?
I move to approve the item A to L on consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Freiberg.
No, I didn't need a roll call there, did I?
No.
What was I thinking? Sorry, but I didn't mean to startle you, and you were like, you were right on to that. I so apologize. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The next one's going to need that roll call vote. Okay, we have no public hearings or meetings this evening. Payment of claims, is there, or anyone have any items that they wish to have more information about to question? If not, is there a motion and a second, of which I'm giving you warning here, we'll have a roll call vote. Motion.
I'll move to approve the payment of claims as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I've got it all practiced. Roll call.
Councilmember Freiberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Norrian.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey.
Aye.
Mayor Kase.
Aye. I think all those endless months of roll call votes just kind of, kind of threw me there. All right. So I do have a report of council member I want to chat about, and I'll tell you upfront what I'm, what I'm looking for from, from the four of you, so just, so you can give me some feedback. What I would like to possibly even come out of this this evening is a consensus that we might direct staff, if we need a motion, we'll take it, but I'm not looking for that, a consensus that we would move forward with four fairly straightforward initiatives. One does require a little bit of money, but I don't know that it requires a vote, that would further protect, add further protections to the Frederick Miller Spring. And what, what is the impetus for this, what drove this with me the last couple days, weeks or so, is, is really the awareness, and I thank the public that got involved, it's, it's the awareness that was brought to this spring. In my mind, I don't, I guess erroneous is a pejorative word, but, but to me, the 28-acre parcel that we approved is, is a side issue because we determined it would not impact the spring. But as people did begin to talk about their love of the spring and the fact that it is the entry point for so many people coming in Eden Prairie, that brought awareness to all of us of how valued it is, how treasured it is, and it raised a lot of questions in my mind. We've never really tested the waters thoroughly enough that we could actually give some results to people knowledgeably of the water quality. So here are my four recommendations I'd like you to think about. So the first is that because of the hydrology report that was handled by Enviro Solutions along with the hydrology work back in 2006, '07 with the Prospect Road Bridge Project and that EAW, we, I believe we have a much clearer idea today on the recharge watershed area that's feeding Miller Spring. So with that knowledge, I'd like us to have staff actually really get as detailed as they can in defining their best guess for the outline of the recharge area, and I would like to see us notify all homes that live in that recharge area within the dotted line, whatever we identify. I'm guessing it's about mile and a half square, two miles, it's not a huge area. And I would love to have us send a letter in each home that would say, hey, do you know that the rainwater that falls on your lawn percolates through the ground, and we believe in 10 to 15 years it actually comes out in Miller Spring? That's pretty cool. Would you be interested in learning more about pesticide use, insecticide use, fertilizer use? If so, contact Leslie Stovering, here's her home phone, I'm kidding, Leslie. Contacts Leslie Stovering at the city, and we will give you some resources and, and just some more knowledge. Possibly in six months, we contact them again, maybe a year. But we just identify who actually, we believe the Noble Hill Project will have zero impact on the spring, but now we know that these other thousand homes will, so let's do something about this. That's, that's my initiative number one. It's not that difficult, it's not that hard, it's not expensive. Number two, we've never, to my knowledge, done a complete thorough, I don't know if it's a $5,000, it's not super expensive, water analysis of this water. I want to do it for a couple reasons. One is, I want to be able to assure people that the water they're drinking's not causing cancer in children. We don't know that. I mean, we know that there, it's, it's a hard water, there's magnesium deposits, we, we know there's some hydrates in there, we know occasionally coliform will close it. We really don't know a lot else. The other reason is I want a baseline. I want to be able to track it now in the next, you know, two, three, four, five years. I do not believe we in any way want to get into testing it monthly or every six months, but maybe, maybe annually, and just to make sure the seasonal cadence stays consistent, we check it every year on June 15th or something. We just pull a date out, right? And then, and then we just keep track, and we just track it. So that, that's number two, just to do a really thorough water analysis. Number three, I think we should beautify that area. I mean, if it is this entry point where thousands of people experience Eden Prairie for the very first time as they come into our city there, then, and maybe they do, maybe a lot of people like the ambiance of it the way it is, but I do think we should put maybe a pavilion, an open, you know, walled pavilion on it, sign it better, possibly redo the concrete, I don't know even what you call it, the well structure. We did all learn, I don't know if you saw the note from Stu Fox, that he, the city staff had done some research several, I don't know, I think it's a decade back or more, and they discovered that my idea of putting three or four spigots in there might not work. I don't know that that's, even from reading Stu's letter, I don't know that, that that's definitive to what it is today. So I would like to check that out. I'd love to see if we could get two spig, excuse me, two spigot, I need a glass of water, two spigots or, that's a joke, two spigots or three spigots in there. Rick's looking at, okay, I'll jump, I'll, I'll go get some water. But anyway, I'd like...
Have the spring water sitting in the back.
I'd like to see if we could get a couple spigots in there. If not, then, then we have, because of water, I don't understand the water pressure piece of why it wouldn't supply 10, but, but whatever, I trust that Stu researched it and found out some information. So that's, that's the third thing. Beautify that area. It's not very expensive. I've talked to city staff already, we, I'm not going to throw numbers out, but we can do it, I think, fairly inexpensively. All right, fourth, and this is, this is an important deal to me, and Kate, if you would put up the one picture there. So last week, former chief of police Jim Clark invited my wife and me down to sit on their deck and then take a walk in the Prairie Bluff Conservation Area, PBCA. PBCA is an area of land that Eden Prairie City owns, the people of Eden Prairie own it. It's about 58 acres that abuts up on the east side of the spring. That bluff land is, is vulnerable, vulnerable bluff land. It's sand. Luckily, we got it saved back years ago when each development would develop, they would often dedicate that land to the city. We own a lot of bluff land up and down the bluff of Minnesota River. But this bluff land is fed by foot traffic from two areas. What you're looking at, as you're looking at it, is an illegal, unplanned path that has been worn by people walking off trail. But the PBCA is accessed by two areas. One is you go up into Hennepin Village, and there's, as part of the developers agreement back in the early 2000s, the city kept, was dedicated ownership to a pavilion and six parking spots and a pathway right into the PBCA. It's been way overused by wedding parties. There's a sign that says, "Do not cross this point," you know, vulnerable land, whatever, people, hundreds cross it. And there's wedding parties that go out there on a weekly basis with 20 and 30 people, and they walk up to the point and they set up, and it's out on Wedding Side 7 that this is the place you go. And they are illegally crossing barriers, and they're damaging the bluff. Okay, that's the one source. So I'm, I'm really raising this connected to the spring a little bit, but this half I'm saying right now is not connected. So I believe we should sign it better, and not just sign it stay off, because to a high school kid, that's like walk there. But sign it with, hey, do you know there are vulnerable prairie plants here that are endangered? Do you know that there, do you know what I saw up there? Meow, I love this, if she's listening, I saw bumblebees up there. I'd never seen bumblebees on the standal property, but I saw bumblebees all over this PBCA property. So there are, there's plant life, there's animal life, there's just really vulnerable bluff land that we need to keep, we need to get people off of that. We're not ticketing, to my knowledge, and I'm, I'm going to let staff figure the logistics out, or I'm not going to direct, hey, we need to ticket this or begin to ticket this person, that's up to our police and whatever, but I, I know at this point, we're not doing a lot of ticketing. There are cars that are supposed to be off of there at 10 o'clock, they're not. There are people that are crossing over wedding parties out there that are just being asked to leave. I just think, I think we need to get serious as a city that if we're going to guard this and protect this bluff area, we need to do it. Okay, now let me go back to the spring, because they're accessing this land from the spring too. So they, they park at the spring, they walk up the trail to the east there, and they go up, and they're supposed to stay on a trail that leads south. Instead, they cut right, go to the next one, because this is horrible. So they, they go right up this trail right here, right there. That is not a planned trail. That is a worn, eroded trail that kids are, I'm, I'm thinking kids, and I'll tell you why I'm thinking that, and I love kids, so I'm not being pejorative, but kids, I believe, are walking up that trail a lot because there's a campsite, an illegal campsite at the top of the hill with a fire pit. If that fire pit gets out of hand, the spring burns. So what I'm asking the friends of Frederick Miller Spring Group to partner with us, to join us, if they can begin to educate people when they walk up that trail, they're educating them, they educated them about the standal property, now let's educate people about the Prairie Bluff area that we own right now. Because if the Prairie Bluff area, even though the water from the PBCA is not going into the spring, it's on the east side, what will impact the spring is if the bluff begins to erode and actually, I don't know if it caves down the hill, I guess Jay could help me more, but I mean, if it begins to erode so badly that we begin to lose it because it's unstable ground, that impacts the creek and the spring. And then the second thing is the fire hazard. So if we don't begin to protect what we have and use maybe the energy of this group that wants to protect the spring, because so do we. We, we love, we must have said that so many times that Tuesday night, we love the spring. I don't want to say more than all the people that were here, but I believe that because our, the history's on our side. We've proved it. We love the spring, we want to protect it, we want to keep people safe, we want the spring to be here for generations to come. We need to do some things about it now. One is identify the watershed impact area and then go out and educate people. Second is to impact the people that are destroying the Prairie Bluff to the east because that's going to negatively impact the spring. All right. I don't, again, I don't think this requires any motions. If you like it, I'd love to hear from you. I just think we could direct staff just by consensus. If we need votes, Maggie and Rick can talk to us, or we can bring back, I don't care, motions. I, I don't like to bring things up at a meeting and have a vote the night of that, but, but anyway, I'll, I'll pause and let any of you weigh in. Councilmember Freiberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I commend you on that. I think it's a great idea. What we're dealing with, there's a lot of passion out there, like you say, and a partnership for the common good. After looking at those pictures that you had up there, I understand totally that if something's not done, there's going to be a problem. And the one that really concerned me is when you start pointing out illegal fire pits. That's insane. I mean, if we keep letting that go, now that we're aware of it, that, and I know, you know, that whole area, like you say, is sand, quite unstable. No one seems to be paying a lot of attention to what's happened right there now, so certainly that would be something I could support, of, of all four parts of that.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Um, yes. In fact, the bluff land worries me a lot. We've taken a lot of care to get it so that it wouldn't degrade, and we probably need more signs, you know, getting rid of that puts some kind of barrier on that illegal trail, getting rid of the fire pit, making sure people know where the trail is, that they can walk safely and deal with it, because I remember we spent a lot of time getting that land so it wouldn't be developed. And also, if people are going beyond the area, the lookout area there, there needs to be more warnings with that too, that because... more warnings with that, too, that, because you, you know, you're starting to get into land that's very, well, it's not unstable, but it can be destroyed. And there's no reason to destroy land for a wedding picture.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like Mr. Freiber said, Councilmember Freiber said, I agree with him 100%, but the four initiative that you brought up, very good observation. I just wanted to highlight again, we all love spring. I just want everybody hear that again, again. And this is a good example of that, of five councilmen, but not only the spring, we care about the environment as a whole in Eden Prairie. We heard today about the trees. We got the best award, we're having the best city with all the trees. And here is another example of that. So 100% I agree with the mayor's comments and I'll follow it.
Councilmember Toomey?
Okay. So I agree with everything that councilmember, the other councilmembers have said. I do have a couple of questions. The testing, when you said you want to get a baseline testing of everything, but we still do monthly testing, right? We do for nitrates and E. coli?
I'm going to let Mr. Getchow be precise, because I think I know, but go ahead.
Yes, yeah. Councilmember Toomey, you're right. We test for those two, those two elements, those two things, but nothing else.
So we'll continue to test for that monthly in the spring and then yearly do like a big test of everything that the mayor was talking about?
That's what I'm taking away from that, absolutely.
Okay. And then, is, so people now go up to the bluffs for the wedding pictures to be taken. Could there be an area that we designate, like a photo, I don't know, photo spot or something? I'm sure somebody can come up with a better name, but.
You know, I'd maybe, rather than put Mr. Lothammer specifically in the spot, would you be willing to come back, Mr. Lothammer, with just, with some thought, you listen to us tonight, you know, and come back with some thoughts and share with us how it could be better policed, how it could be better signed, and then take in Councilmember Toomey's idea of would that ever work? And if it doesn't, then it doesn't. There's got to be other places. We just can't have our bluff being destroyed because it's the hotspot to take wedding pictures. However, I do understand your suggestion, and I think that's a good one, and if there is a way to have some kind of a compromise. But Mr. Lothammer, you, go ahead if you want to. No, please.
Easy answers for you. Yeah, Councilmember Toomey, when you go up there now, the access that the mayor was talking about from up in Hennepin Village, you basically walk by the small gazebo that's there, and it brings you out onto the trail, the hard surface trail that's intended to go along that whole housing and bluff line where people should stay. And what I'm putting up here, it gives you some ideas of the signs and the locations that are already there. So we have done, I mean, we've got pictures, we've got maps, we've got barricade signs that I totally dislike, because it's not very park-like. And people, but we've had to amp that up, and so people are still walking around that. We've added fences. They're walking around that. This area right down here, wherever you see this orange, and this right here on the sign, this picture, and this picture, show everybody where they can go and where they should go. And this is a great spot for weddings as well, but they seem to only want to come and walk right by that sign and straight out into the conservation area. And when the mayor talks about wedding pictures, that includes people bringing couches, oversized chairs, props, and they have a full setup out there. And they will have a half-day photo shoot almost. And again, they're walking right by all of these signs. The neighbors are telling them to go away.
Jay, do we have the laws right now to ticket and force them to comply?
We do. I mean, it is trespassing is what-
And what would, what would a non-compliance ticket, what would that look like? And who would get it? Everyone? The wedding photographer? Who?
Well, technically, all of them would be trespassing. Anybody that went over past the sign that says not permitted.
So we could have a softer approach at first, warnings and make them move. And then the photographer, we could photograph, and if they, and if they come back with their own camera, if they come back, we could ticket.
Yeah. And so a couple, two years ago, prior to COVID, basically, we did go through a pretty extensive internet search and contacted all of them that were advertising this as a location to let them know. That helped some, at least right away. It seemed to tamp it down a little bit, and some called us and just wanted to verify. But they're still, and it's not just weddings or just photographers, it's people in general that say, I'd like to go a little farther out and get a little closer look at the river.
So there's, not to be specific, but there are Indian burial mountains around there. So there are people that are traipsing across areas that they absolutely cannot be in. I don't, I don't want to speak for the rest of you can nod here, but I think you're feeling a consensus that we want stricter compliance. At least try it out for a couple of months. Try to, we're not going to stop this ever. We can't have police parked up there. We'll never stop it completely. But I think we need to tamp down on it and get serious about it for a while, for two, three months, and get the word out there that, hey, Eden Prairie's ticketing on this, and you're actually getting fined. And then the campsite with the campfire, I think we need to have some type of police presence more often. I don't know what that looks like either. But Mr. Getchow, can you take all these ideas and thoughts back and talk about it at a staff meeting? And if you run into, if there are barriers and walls that we're not picking up, bring it back to us. I mean, I don't, we're not going to direct something we don't know what we're talking about, so help us. But I think you're picking up our consensus that we, this is not acceptable.
Well, I am. Yeah, absolutely. We can follow up. I don't think anything you've said, Mayor, in your report, including the spring, needs any vote or action, but we will come back, we can come back with an update about the recharge area and who we've educated and what we've educated. We can come back with a presentation about the improvements of the spring, and we can keep you updated on the conservation area as well.
Okay. Councilmember Ryan?
Yeah, just one question. The signage, do we right now say we fined or just don't go there? I mean, how far the signage say maybe?
So we say, one of the signs says, "Native Prairie Protection Area, do not enter. Violators will be prosecuted." That's, trail ends here, no access beyond this point, stay on designated trails. So a couple different methods of saying it, but we do let people know that violators will be prosecuted. We also have a sign for park hours and general park rules.
So it's very clear, very clear for the person.
I don't, I don't want to micromanage. I want staff to figure that out. But I think the consensus is that we need some additional compliance work and then also possibly signage. And I would love us to consider educational signage, because I think you're not going to get maybe certain types of high school kids that will care that there's, you know, vulnerable prairie grasses. But you will get many people that will care about that. And when we were down there just the other night with Jim Clark, his wife, and my wife, Kathy, we came across this family that was walking on this, and they're really nice people, walking on this trail they should not have been walking on. So we told them. And then they, we saw them stop other people and say, no, you've got to walk here. So I just think, you know, if we begin to get that message out by this educational signs, what's here, even, I mean, we never want to publicize burial mounts, but if you could somehow publicize this is indigenous people, land, area, this is sacred, oh, I don't know, right. But if we do the educational piece, I think that will get to a lot of people. And then we need to do the forced compliance piece with fines and tickets and to get to some of the others. So, okay.
And I would also like, whatever we need to do to get rid of that fire pit, we need to do, because that could start burning all along if it's not in a wet year, but in a dry year. That could cause lots of harm to the grasses and such, plus potentially people's homes. And if it got worse, even providing smoke down on the, you know, roads and such. So that has to stop now. It's not just a fun thing to go do. It's a dangerous thing to go do. So if you have to, if they've got rocks or whatever, that all needs to go, and you practically need to put a sign in the middle of it.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I just, I want to make one more comment reflecting on two weeks ago, and then I will put that to rest. I don't know if the rest of us, how you feel. But the questions come up a lot, why didn't we buy the land? And I just want to underscore that we do own 4,200 acres that we have purchased. And I'm going to make a statement here that you can fact-check me. In fact, Mr. Getchow, I'll ask you to fact-check me later. But I believe not only would this have been the most expensive per acre land if we'd ever bought Noble Hill, but I think it would have been in raw number the most expensive. I don't think we've ever spent $5 million on a parcel. Even Richard T. Anderson was what, 2.3 million, and we got 100 acres or I don't know what we got. So in other words, to ask the people of Eden Prairie to buy 28 acres of farmland, farmland, eight of which we're getting for free, of woods to the city. So we would have paid $5 million for 20 acres, and not that we do things to make tax dollars, but when you pull land off the tax rolls, you do lose that tax dollar potential. So based on 50 homes at $800,000, I did some quick calculation, over the next 30 years, which is a generation, we would have lost another $6 million. So this land would have been by far the most expensive land we ever purchased to pick up this little parcel of 20 acres, because the eight would have been given to us anyway. When we had 4,200, it made no sense to us. Right when we have the 58 acres next to it that we do need to be protecting, it's not farmland, it's sand bluff land. So I just want to make sure that the people of Eden Prairie understand that the five of us did our due diligence. We did, made the best decision for the people of Eden Prairie today and ongoing, and we protected the spring and we protected the creek. Lot of misinformation out there, a lot of innuendos, lies, you know, it's social media, it's the world we live in. But we need to also make sure that we get our ideas out there as well, the truth. So, okay. Mr. Lothammer, I believe you have the last item. No, not you. It's the police chief.
Yes.
Mr. Weber, you have, I just got so used to Mr. Lothammer coming up without me directing him. Mr. Weber.
I'm glad to yield my time.
Pleased to have you here in a presentation of the 2020 annual report. Mr. Getchow, do you want to say anything prior to Mr. Weber speaking?
No, I have something to say after he's done, though.
Okay. Mr. Weber, chief.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. You know, every spring, we publish an annual report that goes through kind of the previous year's activities of things that went on with the police department. And statutory requirements dictate that we have to report basic crime data to both the state and the federal government. And, you know, we do gather other statistics to share with you folks and residents and staff to let them know what's been going on. I think that over the last year, we've learned that society really has a strong desire to see transparency in policing, and they want to know what's going on with our police department. And this is something we've done for years, so we're comfortable, and we recognize that we can do some enhancing of that. You know, because our community views our department as more than just law enforcement, as public servants. There's some things that I'd like to go through with you tonight to show some of those service-related calls that we believe help us build relationships with the community. Do you have the, great, thank you. So we'll start by going through the annual report. The clicker's not working, huh?
At the end.
There we go. So in 2020, you'll see that there's, I provided you with each, each of you a copy tonight, but you'll see that we switched from what used to be Minnesota offense codes to a new system called NIBRs, which is National Incident Based Reporting System. So there is some inconsistencies from '19 to '20, but that will be the only time that will occur. And as we continue to report our data to NIBRs, you'll get back into that apples-to-apples comparison from year to year. And that will correct. Overall, last year, our call volume was down significantly, which is a good thing. I think with COVID, you know, a lot of people were inside. You'll see that, for example, a lot of our motor vehicle crashes, there was a silver lining, there was less traffic on the road, so there were less crashes. So we did recognize, I hate to say some benefits of COVID, but some of those things in terms of being silver linings did exist. We did see an increase in assaults. I think that going into COVID, we were predicting that there would be a lot of fears and anxieties in the community, not just Eden Prairie, but in society as well. And we did see some of those assault report calls go up. And we hope that that comes down. You'll also see that weapons-related offenses increased. And due to traffic enforcement efforts, we were finding cases where people were carrying weapons without a permit, carrying weapons while under the influence, or transporting a firearms in an illegal manner. You have to put it in the rearmost portion of the vehicle, unload it in a case. And there were situations where we found people were not doing that, and we were, conversely, saw that increase in those types of cases. Transparency. I think we spoke a little bit earlier tonight at the workshop, you know, after the death of George Floyd, I think there was a significant outcry by society saying, hey, we want to know more about what police departments are doing. And we, I think, saw that in Eden Prairie, that our community wanted to see an increase in transparency. And with the help of Joyce Lorenz and our Communications Department and Sonia Richie Roy, we were able to really quickly publish our policy manual on the internet so that folks can go there and look at what guides our enforcement efforts or our service here in Eden Prairie. You may recall back in 2016, President Obama convened a group to do what's called the 21st Century Policing Study. And at that time, we went through and looked at, okay, where are we, are we measuring up with some of those recommendations? And we had a lot of the data. And we were very comfortable that there were many things that we were complying with or maybe even exceeding what some of those recommendations were. The nice thing is we had all that data, and when people were asking questions within the last year, we were able to publish that data on the internet as well. In February of 2020, the Attorney General's Office and the Public Safety Commissioner also convened a police-involved deadly force encounters group. And we were able to go through that and look at what some of those recommendations were. I believe there were 28, and see where we landed in terms of those recommendations, were we compliant. And we were able to publish that as well. And then shortly after the death of George Floyd, we heard of a group out there, while it wasn't government-driven, but it was a concept called Eight Can't Wait, and it talked about eight things that people wanted to see, very succinct with police departments in terms of banning chokeholds and things of that nature. And we were able to go through and make sure we were compliant with those things and publish that as well. So we're proud of the transparency we were able to rapidly provide for the community. As I said earlier, we have an obligation to provide the crime stats. But, you know, here in Eden Prairie, something that I think is fundamental to this organization is, what do we do beyond crime fighting, if you will, and what do we do to serve our community? And we really have a strong emphasis on providing service. Medical emergencies is one that's very important. You know, last year, we had 2,250 medical EMS runs where we are getting out with the ambulance service and helping people in their time and needs. So you're really more acting in that caretaker role than that enforcement role. That was a decrease from 2019. In 2019, we had a little over 2,700 calls. We did rely very heavily on our friends with the fire department over the last year, the method by which we respond to medicals, needing all of that extra personal protective equipment with gloves and masks and gowns, their ability to have somebody driving a fire rig while somebody else is gearing up. So we did shift, and we were able to continue that service model with the fire department. Again, our goal is to train all of our officers to the EMT level. We are experiencing some challenges in that training right now, but we continue to work forward and make sure we're going to get everybody into that, those training classes. It's a little difficult with COVID. I think so many of the in-person classroom-type trainings were really kind of put on the back burner, but we're- But we're we're very excited about coming out of that here in the future and reinvigorating that. Something else that I think we do that is is kind of neat. Last year, we did 289 lift assists. Sometimes people, they may slip, fall at home, and they call us just to say, hey, I just need a little help getting up. And our ability to go help people in that time and need is very important. And again, it's something that allows us to build a relationship with a community member and build those trust that they can call us when they have an issue or a concern. Public assists, 2,800 public assists. Those could be anything from questions on laws. Oftentimes, it's a request for maybe an opinion or an intervention in a civil case. And we certainly don't want to get involved in those civil cases. I'll smile at our city attorney on that. But I think explaining to people the difference between a criminal issue we can deal with and a civil issue is very helpful for people. And they may be able to resolve some of those things with the advice that we give them of of soliciting help from somebody who specializes in civil issues. You'd be surprised at the number of parenting advice or child custody disputes that we get involved in. And sometimes that's just a matter of listening and help people guide through and mediating situations. And neighbor disagreements, you know, sometimes people just don't get along as next-door neighbors. And we we get called to step in and mediate those types of disagreements. But again, we hope they don't happen, but they're a great opportunity for us to engage the community and build that trust. Lockouts, we still do lockouts here in Eden Prairie. Not many communities do that, but boy, it's it's interesting, 594 of them. I remember reading some feedback from one woman who had locked her car or locked her keys in her car at a retailer. And one of the problems was the key fob didn't have a battery. And she wrote of her appreciation that the officer took the time to help her change out the battery or something along those lines. And that may have had something to do with the vehicle locking or something like that. But her her satisfaction was that it was just more than just unlocking the car. It was helping her to solve that problem. So we're we're very happy that our officers have the ability to do that. You know, we talk about mental health or psych-related calls. You'll see here that we had, you know, 168 psych-related medicals and 73 suicide attempt or threats that we get called to. Something that I'm particularly proud of, don't take credit for, but back in 2013, as a department, we decided that CIT, a 40-hour course of talking, our officers or training them in crisis intervention techniques or de-escalation techniques and really slowing things down and helping people through a bad day. And, you know, when you see that type of number where you're, you know, over 200 cases where you're helping people, slowing down, getting them the help they need, that's very important. I would argue that with COVID, just about all of the calls we went on, there was a maybe an increased level of anxiety amongst people, what was probably maybe a more routine fender bender in the past. When people had fears, anxieties, frustrations over the last year with COVID, we shifted and I saw it firsthand. Our officers really tried to be patient with people and understand that there's more to it than just a simple fender bender. There's a lot of emotion behind it. You know that we're very involved in our our schools. We have a total of four officers and one sergeant assigned to the the school district here in Eden Prairie. And, boy, they call us for all types of things. One of the things that was kind of neat this year with with COVID was that if kids weren't checking in online, the school would call us and say, hey, could you go check on the family or make sure everything's okay? And, you know, I think our officers really embraced that opportunity because they missed that face-to-face contact or that frequent intervention with the students. So when the school would call and ask if we could do that, they they really enjoyed the opportunity to go out and meet with kids and their families. Community speaking engagements, boy, everything from personal safety, safe driving for new drivers, neighborhood watch meetings. I know I I was able to meet with the homeowners association in a virtual platform. So our ability to shift and adjust and continue some of those community-building tools in a virtual format, we adjusted and we were able to do that. We're very excited about getting back out and shaking hands and having that face-to-face interaction with folks coming up here this year. But the ability to continue it on in that format, we were we were able to pull it off. Directed patrols, you know, sometimes people may just have a concern about something in their neighborhood, and they'll call and ask, hey, could I get a little extra patrol from an officer for this issue? The nice thing is we track all that data and then that individual that calls and says, hey, here's the concern I'm having maybe in my neighborhood. We can go back and tell them the date, time, how long we spent, which officer was there, what we found. So we, you know, really enjoy that opportunity to go back and give the feedback to the resident, the requests that I think, again, that builds that that trust and enhances the relationships. Lot of community outreach efforts that were maybe, again, put on the back burner due to COVID, but we were still able to pull off the polar plunge. You know, I think we started that in 2008, working with Special Olympics Minnesota. And just here in Eden Prairie, working with Special Olympics Minnesota and our involvement, I think to date, we've helped them raise over $1.5 million for Special Olympics. And that's something that's very near and dear to the hearts of many of the officers. They like to get out and work with the athletes and and help them raise money so that they can continue their programming. Our Police Explorer program, you know, is a great tool for us to look for future police officers. It gets youth a little more in-depth or involved in policing so that they can understand, you know, what goes into becoming a police officer. Our particular post is a joint venture with the city of Edina. So we work with them and it's a joint post, and it allows those kids from 14 to 21. Great tool for recruiting, but then they also volunteer in the community. And here you can see that they went to Feed My Starving Children and packs a meal. So they they see it as an opportunity to give back to the community as well. Many of you are aware, we used to do Halloween at the mall with the Parks and Recreation Department and the Fire Department. And I I don't know whose idea, if it was Park and Rec or Fire, but, boy, this Boo Drive-Thru was really, really a fun event this year where families could drive their kids through and we could still give them some candy and they could enjoy Halloween a little bit, knowing that we couldn't be over at the Eden Prairie Shopping Center. We had a sports equipment giveaway funded by Shields and the Eden Prairie Crime Prevention Fund, partnered with Parks and Rec and the Fire Department to hand out some sports equipment to kids. You know, towards the end of the school year, we recognized that so many of the organized programs were going to be restricted due to COVID. And knowing that these kids would still want to go out and play their sporting events, there was some some very generous donations, again, through the Crime Prevention Fund and Shields. And we were able to go out and give some of those folks some sporting goods equipment so they could still enjoy their summer. Holiday with Heroes, we used to have a program here called Shop with a Cop. And my friend Chief Gerber agreed that, you know, this might be kind of neat if we changed it up and we would get the Fire Department involved. Unfortunately, this year was a little bit, we couldn't spend a lot of time with the the child that we would normally shop with. But we were still able to hopefully make the holiday season a little bit better for some of these families by giving them some resources to go out and get Christmas presents or or holiday presents for their family. And then another really, really unique thing or meat program that the Eden Prairie Crime Prevention Fund funded this year was during the holiday season, they gave every officer a $50 bill. And they said, we'd like you to go out and just maybe find somebody who looks like they're maybe having a bad day or a little down on their luck or could use the help and kind of brighten their day. And it was really, really well received. You know, it's it's interesting, you you talk about helping the community out. I would argue that that probably did more for the officers than it did for the recipient because those officers, they they want to help people. And their ability to interact has somewhat been restricted. So being able to go out and be the, you know, the good person and help somebody out, they really, really enjoyed that. And we're hoping we can replicate that this coming year as well. And then Toys for Tots is something that we've done for many years. We're a collection site here. We have collection boxes over at the mall, here at City Hall, down in the Police Department. And we collect those, you know, new unwrapped toys. And we work with the United States Marine Corps and we take it all to a a central spot to drop it off right before Christmas. And that way, folks that maybe could use a little help with getting some gifts for their families, the officers really enjoy collecting that and and helping those folks out. And then I think, well, I know, again, coming back to what I said earlier about our community really wanting to know a little bit more about what's going on in the community or going on with policing. We've really tried to utilize social media to get the word out through blogs and Facebook and Twitter and share with the community and actually sometimes engage in a conversation with folks to hear what their concerns are in the community through those those mechanisms. And we've continued that. That really didn't, well, it was very, the importance of it was increased during COVID, but we were able to continue on with that. So, you know, as I said earlier, we have those obligations to report on criminal activity. But I think over the the year, we've really, really heard that resounding message. Maybe not so much in Eden Prairie, but society as a whole. They want relationships with their officers. And it's very comforting for me that that's something that's fundamental to who we are. It has been all along. So we're really not having to make a lot of adjustments. But to to share that with you folks and share with the community, hear some of the things. And sometimes that generates new ideas for us to continue to build those relationships and build that community trust. And with that, I will entertain any questions.
No, we're so proud of our police officers and the work that you have done, Chief, as well, and the rest of your leadership. And I think Mr. Getchel probably wants to say something now following this report or not quite?
Mayor, yeah, if there, if council doesn't have any questions or comments on the report.
Still related to policing, though, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I, we might want to piggyback on that.
Yeah, absolutely. But if if nobody else has anything on the report, I I think everyone in the room here knows that, but maybe not everybody watching, that this is the chief's last meeting. So it's 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 somewhat of a bittersweet moment after 10 or 11 days and 31 years, I believe, May 7, 1990, if that's that's the correct date. I know I was sophomore in college at the time, but but you were you were starting your your career here. And you will be missed. You are such a dedicated public servant. You lead such an excellent department. And there's also all the work that's done in the community. So I personally want to thank you for your service and let you know how much you're appreciated and how much you'll be missed.
I need one for this, but.
You know, I I guess I wasn't prepared to speak to that, but gratitude goes to you folks. The city took a chance on a on a 22-year-old kid and, boy.
That paid off for us.
I've lived the dream. And career-wise, there's not a luckier guy out there than I. And for that, I will always be extremely grateful to you folks for the support that you provided and allowed me to live my dream. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your service and thank you for your leadership. It means a lot.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Council, anything else to come before the council this evening? Mr. Getchel, anything?
No.
Could I entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'm going to adjourn the city council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. This meeting is adjourned.
I'll drain the battery. I'm going to wake up at 2:00 in the morning. No, I didn't turn the clicker off.